So I, we're still missing one board member. I'm not able to reach him by phone. I, Martha is not here, so we know she won't be here. So you're prerogative, you want to proceed? It's 9:30. All right, you'll have a oath of office form on your desk. We're about to have the Honorable Timothy J. Gaskill swear you in. Hopefully, this is the only time you ever see him in his official capacity. Welcome, Kevin. All right, good morning. And before we get going, I just want to thank all of you for doing what you do. It's not because of the pay that you're here. And again, we appreciate, we appreciate what you do for Vernon County. Some days it might, it may not seem like it, but you are much appreciated. So thank you. All right. So for the oath of office, I've done this numerous times, meaning been sworn in. And sometimes people say a lot of words and you're like, what are you saying? But you guys have it in front of you, right? All right. So I state your name. Having been elected to the office of Vernon County Board Supervisor for District, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Again, thank you, folks, for what you do, appreciate it. Good morning and welcome to everybody. Now that you're all officially county board members, we will call this meeting to order and we will have invocation. And I can't find them. You're going to introduce yourself because I lost the note with your name. Sorry.
Chris Sutton is my name. Very excited to be a part of the new chaplain program here in Vernon County. And so, but was asked by the sheriff to come and open our meeting in prayer. Going to share just a couple of thoughts, if I may. Do I have to hold that button down?
No.
Okay, okay, there we go. I've been reading through the Old Testament, beginning the first of the year. And it's interesting. Moses, Joshua, Abraham, David, all of whom had their major flaws. And many of the other leaders in the Bible, it says that they inquired of the Lord when they had a major decision to make or even just on a daily thing. They asked God what to do before they were taking action or making decisions. When they followed God's instructions, they had success. When they didn't inquire of God, things generally got a little messy for them. The phrase inquired of the Lord is in the Bible at least 85 times. It's a good pattern for us to follow even today. Couple verses for you. Proverbs 3:6, "And all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." James 1:5 says, "If any of you needs wisdom, you should ask God, and he will give it to you, because God gives graciously and generously to all." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you are a good, good God. You want to bless us. You want us to succeed in doing good work. You provide wisdom. You provide understanding. You provide discernment. We pray for unity of mind and purpose. We pray for peace in our community, in our homes, in our relationships, in our workplaces, and especially in our hearts. Father, I thank you for those who are faithfully, faithfully serving you here in this capacity as this board of supervisors. I just pray that you would bless them each one as they make decisions and seek to follow the law of the land as well as in their homes and in their families. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would affirm this meeting was properly posted. And then we'll move into the roll call. I just thought maybe you could, there are seven new members. You know, maybe say a little something about yourselves, so everybody knows who everybody is. Real brief. From District 1, we have Will Bytlick.
Morning. I'm from District 1 over by the Stoddard area. It's about as west, far west as you can get without getting in the river. Been here a while, so try to do the best for Vernon County.
District 2, Struda.
Hi, I'm Dave Struda. I've been on a four-year hiatus for the new members here. I served for four and a half years prior to that. And then we reconfigured. And so I kind of bowed out for a few years. Anyway, it's just really an honor to be a part of this group again. And thank you for all the welcome I received today.
District 3, Gady.
I'm Lauren Gady, District 3, almost as close to the river as Will, but Dave lives on the river, so I can't make that claim. So welcome to all the new members. And I guess that's it.
District 4, Walliser.
Farm out by Westbury. Jerry coerced me into being on the board.
Don't blame me for that. District 5, Kilmer.
Bruce Kilmer, District 5. My wife and I live over by Coon Valley. Vernon County resident my whole life, graduated from high school right here in Barocwa. And very glad to be a part of this board.
District 6, Padretti.
Hi, I'm John Padretti. I have Vernon Vineyards and the Party Barn, if anybody's ever been there. So I'm not too far away. And nice to see a bunch of new people here.
District 7, Slack.
Hi, I'm Nathaniel Slack. I live close to Readstown. The only river I'm near is the Kikaboo. Happy to be here and looking forward to working with all of you.
From District 8, Egan.
Hi, good morning. I am Dave Egan. I represent District 8, which surrounds the city of Westfeet. So nobody goes in or out without our approval. Glad to see you all.
From District 9, Martha Olsen. I don't, she's in Italy as far as I know. Lucky her, right? District 10, Easterday.
Hi, Frank Easterday, District 10. Live over in Amish Paradise on the north end of the county here. And I've been on the board for quite a few years. I don't exactly know how many. Probably one of the senior people on the board have enjoyed everything I've been doing. I've been on the land and water all the years that I've been on the county board. However, it doesn't seem like a lot of things we've done have worked out in our favor, especially with the dams. But yeah, that's me and thank you.
District 11, Jacobson.
Good morning, I'm Charlie Jacobson, District 11, which is the north half of Barocwa. I'm retired after 30 years with the sheriff's office and look forward to another couple of good years.
District 12, Henry.
Hi, I'm Mary Henry. And this would be my fourth term. And I represent everything south of Charlie, out to past the golf course and Highway YT, I believe it's T, and out on SS. So all of town here. And I'm a retired school administrator and taught kindergarten in Barocwa before I did that for 28 years. And I'm very excited to be back on.
District 13, Taylor.
Hi, my name is Allison Taylor. I represent the other parts of Barocwa. This is my fourth term and I'm excited to serve with you all.
District 14, Lawler.
Good morning, my name is Wade Lawler. I live just north of Viola in District 14. My wife and I moved here in the fall of 2016. And I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
District 15, Schweiger.
My name is Sandy Schweiger. And this will be my second term and I'm very humbled to be serving and look forward to another two years. Thank you.
District 16, Wilson.
Paul Wilson, represent District 16 from rural Ontario. Small business owner. This will be my second term. Like to thank my voters for second opportunity. Thank you.
District 17, Muller.
Lonnie Muller, I'm from La Forge. I want to thank my wife for her 10 years of serving on the board and allowing me to take over. I'm the youngest guy on the board, I see.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Sullivan. I represent District 18, lifelong Vernon County resident. Look really forward to working with everybody.
District 19, Stanek.
Good morning, Kay Stanek. And I'm from Hillsborough. I'm on the other river, the Baraboo River, which is kind of foreign to Vernon County. But I look forward as well. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you.
You have 18 present. We have a quorum. So the next item of business is to elect the county board chair. Well, we can do that. We have a motion to excuse Martha. A motion to excuse Martha Olsen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item of business would be to elect a chair. We will be using, we'll take nominations from the floor. So yes, you can nominate yourself if you want. We're going to use a secret ballot so that, you know, maintain that confidentiality of who you think would be the best leader. From past rules, it appears that we will take nominations and then we'll vote. And then the lowest, if someone doesn't get a majority in the first round, then the lowest person is dropped out and we vote again. And we keep doing that until we have a winner. So I posed this question to you in an email. If you saw it, if you didn't, I'm going to repeat it. We're sitting here with 18 members. The possibility exists that we could have a tie. We need to resolve how to break that tie before we start voting. And I'm open to any suggestions. I would, I sent you one county where they voted. If you had three, three tie votes, you know, three ballots, then the clerk flipped a coin. What's your preference?
Didn't you?
Festivus, this is the wrong time of year. Streets, feasts of strength and airing of grievances, that's in December.
Didn't you also in that email say we could go up to three times?
Three, three tied ballots, then we would, I would flip a coin. If that's, our rules don't address it and the statutes don't address it. Robert's Rules does? Okay.
And Robert's Rules does. And would say you just keep voting till you get to that end result. But with that said, the board, it would be permissible to establish by a motion and a vote, majority vote would, would govern. If you want to do it differently, including a flip of a coin could be an option there. So it would be appropriate to have a little discussion. And then if any of you 19 supervisors are to a point where you want to make a motion on the floor as to which process you'll follow, that would be appropriate. And then it would follow with a second motion if you get there. Jerry would confirm if further discussion would be warranted before you then vote. Majority vote is going to tell you the procedure. And then let's just make sure when we speak, and it's absolutely good that you're chiming in and speaking out, that discussion is appropriate here. Just turn on your mics for those who are observing remotely.
Yeah, we need to push the button or the remote people can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, there's, there's no route for getting Martha's input.
That would be correct. We've, we've tried that, all sorts of different options.
And I'm going to make the motion that we keep voting until we have a majority.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Who was that? Lonnie?
While he's taking notes, any further discussion would be appropriate at this time, if any.
We have the motion to, we will continue voting until we have a winner. And a second, is there any further discussion on that? Gady?
Is there going to be like a time between the votes where, you know, people, you know, give a little speech or whatever, try to convince? Or are we just going to vote, 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 or?
I think, I think it'd be appropriate after one or two ties that we would just break and say like, all right, let's, whoever these two nominees are, give a little speech and then try voting again. Yes, I think that'd be appropriate.
It's up to the body, but it's certainly permissible.
We will do that unless you guys don't let me.
Will, we also have a speech or whatever you want to call it for each candidate before we vote?
Do you want to do that as a speech? If there are four nominees or when it gets down to the last two? Or what, what would your preference be? Taylor?
I think anyone who wants to, who is nominated should have an opportunity, whether there's four or eight or two, to say why they think they're, that's my opinion.
Without objection, that's what we'll do. Any other discussions? So right now, we're, we have a motion about how we're going to keep voting until we have a winner.
Mr. Chairman, I call the question.
Question being called. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Chris, can you pop up that Word document? I was, we're going to start taking nominations. Our IT is going to put the names up so you can see them. Or of course, you could write them down. So are there any nominations for chair? Henry?
I nominate Allison Taylor for the chair.
Bytlick?
I nominate Lauren Gady for the chair.
Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we have two people nominated. We're going to close nominations. You have blank ballots on your desk. There's two sets of ballots, some that have your name, some that don't. Use the blank ones when you vote. Yeah, we'll start with the little narrative, but I just want to explain the ballot thing. So when you vote, you're going to turn them face down and Morgan's going to collect them. And then we'll tally them up here. So let's start with Allison. Little stump speech.
Okay, well, I believe all elections should have options, so I'm giving you an option. I am very passionate about local government because I believe it is the level of government that has the most impact on citizens' lives, their day-to-day existence we influence. I also know that as an expectation, we demand that when we hire employees and directors, that it is essential that they have a skill set that matches their job role. And I think the chairperson should not be void of that expectation. I have strong organizational leadership skills. I have strong business management skills. I've run businesses for 30 years. I have proven myself here at the county board level to take on complex work and achieve results. I believe I possess the traits needed to hold this position. I am calm, I am deliberate, I'm able to work collaboratively and listen to others. Points of views are often not heard and I think I can help people get their points of view across. We need a person who is measured, strategic and organized to do this job. And I believe I am that person. Teddy Roosevelt said, "Far and away, the best prize that life has to offer is the chance to work hard at work worth doing." So let's do that. Thanks for listening.
Gady?
I'm Lauren Gady. I, this is my fifth term on the board. In addition to this board, I've been the chair here for two years. Been on other numerous committees throughout my tenure here at the county. Also served as the board chair for Harmony Township. Been on the board down there for 25 years and have been board chair there for about 20 years. Also on the board chair for the Harmony Genoa Fire Department. I'm on the board for the Vernon County DHIA. I have a lot of experience running meetings. Always have the best for Vernon County citizens in, you know, in my mind. It is a hard job. You're not always going to make everybody happy. You have to be willing to take the heat. And I've taken a lot of heat over the years from a lot of different directions. And you just got to understand the person's point of view where they're coming from. You know, everybody, everybody has their own point of view and they're not wrong. They might just be different than what you think. And I would appreciate your support. Also, I'm a lifelong Harmony. We're milking cows, we've got chickens. I'm a, I'm a farmer at heart and we are looking forward. Vernon County has just entered the comprehensive plan and will be working on zoning. I ushered that into Harmony Township and we're getting along with the good there. That's going to be a hot button. And we need someone with the experience in that to lead the county in that direction. Thank you.
Nothing else, we're going to vote. So if you wanted to cast your ballot, turn it face down and hand it to Morgan. And no, you don't have to spell the full name. It doesn't have to be exact. We can read intent. I might not call a winner because I got to give up the chair when I do. Go ahead. Two? Three? No. One? And two? Two? That's more. Three? Three? Four? So we'll check to be sure. Looks like it's some, nine? Eight? It's eight for Taylor and 10 for Gady. Mr. Gady, you assume the chair. Well, thank you and thank you, Allison. We are now, where do I?
Be the vice chair.
Taking nominations for vice chair. Will Bytlick? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Well, you take those nominations. They will give a speech.
Nominations are now closed. Do we cast an unanimous ballot or just?
You certainly can if somebody makes that motion.
Otherwise, we have to vote, correct? How, Nikki?
You could certainly, given you have a sole nominee, just have a voice though. That's what the body wishes. It's obvious.
Yeah.
There's only one.
So just everybody in favor of Will?
We should be unanimous ballot for Will.
So move.
Mr. Chairman? Okay.
Motion from?
I second that motion.
All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Will?
Well, you're so gracious, I thank you. It's very humbling to feel that support. I guess probably not all of you maybe know me, but I'm from over in the township of Bergen. I'm a fourth generation farmer over there. Got a fifth and a sixth backing me up already. So I've been part of this county all my life and I'm very proud of it. And for, for my part in this county, I want to make Vernon County the best I can. Thank you again. And for my part in this county, I want to make Vernon County the best I can. Thank you again.
Again, the first committee that we're going to elect is the Conservation and Education. Present members still here are Will Bytelick, Mary Henry, and Frank Easterday. So we will do this one at a time, one position at a time. Charlie?
I'm just questioning, the agenda isn't in that order. Do we need to make a motion to switch or?
Oh. Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, I'm here. It's a little different, so. Agenda says infrastructure, so we will go to infrastructure. Right now, the seats are, Lauren Gady holds the western seat, Martha Olson is the central, Paul Wilson is eastern, Charlie Jacobson is an at-large, and Kyle Semke is no longer with us. He was at-large. So we will open nominations for the western district. Western is one through six.
Clarification for the new folks in the room. Is this similar to chair? You can self-nominate?
Yes, yes, same thing. Self-nominate or have someone nominate you. No seconds required. Will?
I nominate Lauren Gady.
Are there any other nominations?
Bruce Kilmer, District 5. I'd like to nominate myself.
Are there any other nominations?
I'm just going to interrupt just to point out that, Chris, with our IT department is put up on the screen for you guys, the relevant section of the committee structure and guideline document that governs the various committees that make up the board. So if anybody wants to refer back to basically the definition of each committee, the purpose.
Allison?
I'll nominate Wade Lawler.
This is western.
Western, never mind. I don't nominate anybody yet.
Are there any other nominations?
So we're just nominating for the western district right now.
Correct.
And there's nobody who is not available or eligible because of term limits or anything?
Correct.
Thank you.
The only term limit issue is with human service and veteran service. That's the only one. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Lauren Gady and Bruce Kilmer for western district. Bill and Brandon, can you come up and collect ballots for me? So you use the ballots in front of you with the name, and you vote for either Gady or Kilmer? If there is some confusion, there's the secret ballots only for chair and vice chair, the officers of the board. These, these you have to use the ballots with your name on. The results are 14 for Gady, three for Kilmer, and one, I'm really not sure, but it won't make a difference, so we're just going to move on. Next position is for the central one, which is districts seven through 13.
I nominate.
Charlie?
I nominate Martha Olson.
Mary? Same one? Okay. Yeah. Is there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
This is for what seats?
Central.
Seven through 13.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. I'm closing the nomination and requesting unanimous ballot for Martha Olson. A motion for unanimous with Charlie. Seconded by John Threddy. All in favor, aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Allison?
I just have a question after that vote. Did, I know we didn't do this with the first. Do the people who are nominated want to say something? Or are we not doing that?
Oh. I think we were. Yeah, we will start that right now. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Paul Wilson currently, no, nomination for the eastern. Which is currently held by Paul Wilson, districts 14 through 19.
I nominate Paul Wilson.
Lonnie nominates Paul Wilson. No seconds are required. Are there any other nominations? Allison?
I nominate Wade Lawler.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Would you like to give a speech? Would you like to say something, Paul? Wade?
I don't know. I'd like to say, yeah, I've been on infrastructure. It's been a learning experience. I hope I represented my districts well. I don't know. I would like to continue if you also choose. So, thank you.
I represent a district that has five different municipalities, parts are all of five different municipalities. So that involves a lot of folks that are involved with the landfills, a lot of town dumps. And when I was out knocking doors prior to the election, second to none, the landfill was the issue that folks talked about. And so I feel just a responsibility to my district to be on this committee. I also served the Town of Liberty on the zoning committee there, and I know zoning reports to this committee as well. So I think I can be of service in that regard. So, thank you.
It's time to vote. It's 13, Wilson, five, Lawler. Wilson wins. The next positions are at-large, no district boundaries. One is currently held by Charlie Jacobson. Open to Florida nominations.
We're nominating for both those positions right now, or we?
One, one at a time.
Nominate Charlie for that.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Press the button.
Light come on. There we go. So you can nominate, this is the at-large position, right?
Correct.
So anybody in the county is eligible for it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Wade Lawler again, if that's acceptable.
There is one more. So we have Charlie and Wade? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed.
Mr. Chair, just to point a clarity, in this situation, would it be appropriate to approve the slate, the two nominees for two open positions?
No.
No? Thank you.
Speech? Go ahead and give your campaign speech there, Charlie.
I was up all night preparing this. Under 10 minutes. Okay. I'm like Paul. We've been on the committee the last couple of years. We've been through a lot of studying and researching as far as the landfill and a lot of the other things that we're doing. And I guess I would like the opportunity and the privilege to see that through to the next stage with that. Thank you.
Jacobson, 15, Lawler, three. Jacobson wins. I have one more at-large position for the infrastructure committee, and as a reminder, you can nominate yourself, and it does not require a second.
I'd like to nominate Kay Stanek.
Well?
I would like to nominate Sandy Schwager.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. We have Sandy and Kay. You want to give a speech?
I'm considering a different committee because my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, would like to be on Human Services, and because of the area I'm located in, I think we should be somewhere else representing the county so that we don't have two people on Human Services at one end of the county, if that makes sense to anybody. So that's the reason I'm considering some other committees. Thank you.
Thank you. One reason that I wanted to be on infrastructure is that I'm very familiar with all the roads and all the flooding that we've experienced. I've dealt with FEMA for a number of, for at least three major events. I've also dealt with zoning and sanitation department, and I would hopefully be able to provide something useful. Thank you.
Excuse me. Vote for either Sandy or Kay? Schwager, 16, Stanek, two. Schwager wins.
Thank you.
Now we'll do the Conservation Education Committee. Present members are Will Bytelick, Mary Henry, and Frank Easterday. Board has opened the nominations.
Nominate Frank. Sorry, Frank.
Yeah. You're filling that seat right now. One winner, one seat. There, okay.
Yeah, withdraw.
You're withdrawing?
I hear what you're saying, but if anybody wants to, like, everyone should have the opportunity, what, so how do we make sure, like, yes, I hear you don't want to go against Will, note it, but other people, like, may want opportunities, so...
I have to go against Will.
Or go against anyone down the line, is what you're saying.
Eventually, it'll come down to the last place.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there two open seats here that you're not...
There are five open seats.
They're all open.
They're all open.
There's two that you have under, the people that used to serve on it no longer are here. Is that a better way to put it?
Right.
Just as a comment for consideration, the way we're doing this prejudicially favors incumbents, because the seat is viewed as theirs, and anybody who wishes to run is essentially put up against them, whereas we all just acknowledge that all five seats are open, and so nominations should follow that process, open nominations for all seats.
Exactly.
No, it's one seat at a time.
Well, it's for the one seat.
Understood, and I'm suggesting that that favors whoever holds that seat currently, so long as they are not withdrawing themselves from consideration. So whether it's now or in a future general government meeting where that rule is considered, I think it should be articulated more clearly, and the nomination process should be nominations for the, for all seats on the committee, and if there are more nominations than seats, then a vote would be held.
That would require...
I have to remind them that...
That's not how you're doing it.
You can only be on one of these committees, as you like.
Well, okay, so there's five seats, and if seven people are nominated, the two low votes go out.
We are filling one seat at a time. Otherwise, the way it would work is if you vote, if you got five people, you got six people running, and the one person that doesn't have, say, the sixth-place person gets one vote, and the other ones end up with, you know, the rest of them, you can't say, okay, you five have it, because actually the four that would win may not ever achieve a majority on their own. So you have to achieve a majority vote in order to sit on the board. We made that mistake last time. I mean, that...
So Frank running.
Yeah, Frank is running. Unless one of you guys withdraw, then...
Is it necessary to renominate, say, we've got three, one wins, and then the next seat requires renominating the two?
Correct. So right now, we have Frank and Will running for one of the positions on the Conservation Board.
Is, Henry, did you withdraw?
Well, I didn't, I don't want to be chair.
We're filling one seat.
We're filling one chair. We're filling one seat. After the five elections are held, on your first organizational meeting, you elect the chair there.
Then I would like to run again.
It was my nomination, I have not withdrawn it yet.
Okay. Easterday, Henry Bytlick. Are there any further nominations? Are there any?
One seat.
For one seat. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? And your choices are Mary, Frank, and Will.
And if no one gets a majority, like 10 votes, we will vote again, by eliminating the one on the bottom.
Yeah, but this isn't...
What about speeches?
Oh.
Chairman.
Would you guys like to give a speech now that everybody's already written their names down?
This is pretty important. Can we just scrap this vote and give the speeches?
Give the speech.
Yeah. Scrap the votes.
Give me a bell. I'll throw them all. Okay.
Mary first. Put your jogging shoes on there.
Since Mary reminded us, Mary gets to go first.
I have a passion for our beautiful, driftless area. It means everything to our economy and our land resources are priceless. I have worked with Monroe County on their resilience and their watershed projects. Whatever comes north, comes down to us south. So it's important that we have partnerships with the watersheds, because we get what comes next after La Crosse, Monroe, us, and Crawford, and then into the Mississippi. I serve currently on the State Land and Water Conservation Board. I serve vice chair on our Regional Land and Water Board, and I've served on this committee. There's a lot coming up with our dams, it's very complex, and I've attended many meetings, I've gone to watershed meetings, and I want to serve again and protect our land and water. Thank you.
Yeah, I did a one what Mary said there, that I've been on the Conservation Committee and UW Extension for quite a long time. I'm very proud of what our people have done. Our parks have really taken off in Vernon County. If no one has, if you've ever been out to any of our parks and seen what the improvements are there, just, it's something to see. If you've got time to drive around to some of our parks and see the new infrastructure there. And of course, I live in District 10, which is Jersey Valley, which is really up for grabs as to how that's going to go. I would hate to leave the committee right now, however, I know if Mary and Will are on there, things will go fine, so, thank you.
I've been on the land conservation for many years already. My passion is land conservation. I farm with the programs. I've incorporated that over the years. I've been farming for 40 years. I guess I just never lost interest in it, and when I got on here, I was able to see how they worked, how, why they didn't work the way I thought they should have worked for me, but they didn't, so that's been quite an interesting experience. Getting back to a little bit about these dams, I was around when we fixed Jersey Valley the first time. We thought that was really a big project and something that was going to last forever, I guess. It didn't. We're back to Stage 1 almost again, and this time it's going to be a lot bigger project. So with a lot of the experience I've got on these dams, I guess I kind of feel like Frank said there, I'd like to kind of finish these projects or get them started again, so that they see some final completion and are back to a stable water force again in the county. So, yeah, appreciate your support. Thank you.
We will vote for Mary, Frank, or Will.
Bytlick, 10, Henry, 5, Easterday, 3. Bytlick has majority.
We will now take nominations for the second position. The nominations are open.
I'll nominate Mary Henry.
Mary Henry? Frank?
Was that Egan?
Egan. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Nominations are closed. Vote for Frank or Mary. And you want to speak again, or do you just want to say ditto, or...
I'd just like to reiterate what Frank said. My husband and I made a point to go to every single county park and hike, so I know each county park. They are beautiful, and a lot has happened. Get to Sidi Hollow, it is amazing, and it really is something to be proud of, what we've added there, and Esophia, and the Friends of the Park are a huge impact, too. So thank you.
Are you good, Frank? Okay. It would be Henry, 9, Easterday, 9. We're going to vote again. Henry, 11, Easterday, 7. Henry has a majority. We will now take nominations for the second position. The nominations are open.
I'll nominate Mary Henry.
Mary Henry? Frank?
Was that Egan?
Egan. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Nominations are closed. Vote for Frank or Mary. And you want to speak again, or do you just want to say ditto, or...
I'd just like to reiterate what Frank said. My husband and I made a point to go to every single county park and hike, so I know each county park. They are beautiful, and a lot has happened. Get to Sidi Hollow, it is amazing, and it really is something to be proud of, what we've added there, and Esophia, and the Friends of the Park are a huge impact, too. So thank you.
Are you good, Frank? Okay. It would be Henry, 9, Easterday, 9. Henry, 11, Easterday, 7. Henry has a majority.
I'd like to nominate Frank Easterday.
Nomination for Frank? Are there any other nominations? Are there any nominations, further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. I would entertain a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Frank Easterday. Charlie?
Kay.
Kay? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion passes. Nominations for the fourth position on land conservation.
Mr. Chairman?
Allison?
I'd like to nominate myself, if I may.
Hey, Strudoff. I'll nominate Dave Egan.
Dave Egan?
Did I give my speech? No.
Okay, just one second. We have a nomination for Dave Strudoff and Dave Egan.
Wait, now this is...
Allison?
I'll nominate Nathaniel Slack.
Nathaniel Slack?
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. You guys want to give your speech?
Strudoff was first.
Strudoff.
Lot of pressure on me here, so... I'm one of the few representatives here that I live right on the Mississippi, and so my experiences with land and water is significantly different than most of the people here. My past experiences, and both through the private sector and professionally, I've had opportunities to work with the Army Corps of Engineers and many of the projects they've been working on, along with the DNR, DOT, and of course, I've written and successfully was awarded FEMA grants, that went working with the different villages since land nature. So my experience, what I bring to this committee is a little bit different in the sense that most of my experience and exposure has been along the Mississippi corridor, and I think that's one area there that I think I can fill this committee out well enough, that would be a nice balance for everything else we have. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm Nathaniel Slack, I'm new here. So a bit of my history is I've worked within the UW system, managing a research plot at the Spooner Ag Research Station, so I have experience within the UW. I'm also an instructor at the Ag Program at Western Technical College under Donagady, Lauren's daughter-in-law, where I teach soil fertility and nutrient management. We put a lot of emphasis on, if anybody knows Gabe Brown's Soil Principles out of the Dakotas, so a lot of conservation work there. And then professionally, I work as an organic farm auditor, where there is a good chunk... And then professionally, I work as an organic farm auditor where there is a good chunk of each audit that involves reviewing people's biological diversity, soil management plans. So none of this is super new to me. And I've had the luxury of seeing a few hundred farms in Burna County and Southwest area. And I appreciate your support.
I always prefer to run unopposed, but I made an error when I said that I represent District 8, which includes the city of Westby. But I'm the town chairman for the town of Christiana, which surrounds Westby. So that's where the approval to leave or come in is taken up. But I've served on the town board for over 40 years. I have 100 or 240 acre organic dairy and crop farm north of Westby. And I rely heavily on the land and water department for many of the programs that I'm involved with. I gave an impassioned speech, I thought it was, a couple of months ago, or maybe six months, about my grandfather settling in Timbercooley below the ski jump in the late 1800s and how the advent of the dams in the late 50s and 60s saved the valley from flooding. So I'm going to continue to try and save my dam dams. But I don't know what kind of a wall we're up against. Thank you for listening to me.
We have David Egan, Nathaniel Slack, and David Strudoff. Please don't write David. Yeah, no, no Davs. So it's Egan 7, Strudoff 2, Slack 9. There's not a majority. The chair will probably tell you to revote, just between David Egan and Nathaniel Slack. Need to revote between David Egan and Nathaniel Slack.
Mr. Chair, could you repeat the tally from the first vote?
Is Egan 7, Strudoff 2, Slack 9. It is Egan 7, Slack 11. Slack has the majority. Open the floor up for nominations for the final position on conservation education. Mary?
I'd like to nominate David Strudoff. Just a lot to do with the area that he's in and his background so that we have a wide variety in our county. I think it's very important for this.
Dave Strudoff? And Dave Egan? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any nominations? The nominations are closed. Are you guys fine with your speeches, or you want to talk again?
Help me.
Yes, and no Davids on the ballot, please. It's Egan 12, Strudoff 6. Egan has majority. We'll call for a short recess.
I have a question on this note down here. Ben says it's not FSA appointed anymore. So who is the, who appoints it?
So that previously was an FSA appointment and they've, you know, they're backing away, declining according to Ben to do that appointment. The last person appointed by FSA was this Carol Hall. And then you'll see in your packet, there are two people interested in serving on this citizen position. So be a good time to talk about that while we're on break. Right? So it's Carol Hall and Rod Opte, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Oh. What do you want, what do you want me to say? Okay. When we come back from break, we're going to go be, have a picture taken before it starts raining. Nobody's listening to me.
Apparently Jerry isn't loud enough. When we get back from break, before it starts raining, we are going to go out on the east steps of the courthouse and take a group photo so that we don't all get soaked later. I'm looking at you, John. We're doing it.
Yeah. It's good. Five minutes, people. Everybody, everybody go to the courthouse steps and pick up the stragglers as we head down there.
Everybody go to the courthouse steps and pick up the stragglers as we head down there.
Do they need nominations or is this considered them nominating themselves when they put in their name for the interest?
No, they can't nominate.
Well, it looks like we're all back. The next position is for the citizen-at-large for the conservation. Rod Ofti and Carol Hall have expressed interest. They'll need a nomination. Will?
I'll nominate Carol Hall.
Carol Hall? Are there any other nominations? Just for some clarity in your packet, if you would look on the page after the agenda, there is a letter. It's an email from Ben saying that it's item 10 on the agenda. There's a Carol Hall and a Rod Ofti have both asked to be considered for this seat. And we currently have a nomination for Hall. Allison?
So there's two. Carol and Rod are the two who have expressed interest.
And we have a nomination for Carol.
In the interest of choice, I'll nominate Rod.
Rod? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I believe neither party is here, so we will be voting for Carol or Rod.
Lauren, are they online to want to say anything?
Is anybody online that would like Rod or Carol? No? All 15, Ofti 3. Hall has the majority. Maybe I'll just say this out loud.
Let's say this out loud.
Okay, so when we get into human service and veteran service, if you look at the sheet that you have in front of you, only the ones that are highlighted in yellow need action today, unless of course, I don't think there's anybody from that list that got put on a... Sandy... Okay, we have to do something with Sandy Schweiger's seat because she has moved to a different committee. So you can see that you can only serve six years total. Two terms, six years. David Egan has termed out. That's why he needs to be replaced. Gail Muller, you'll find in your packet, there's letters from people that have asked to be citizen members. Gail Muller has... Because she's not a supervisor anymore, that spot needs to be replaced. She's also requested that she be considered a citizen member. However, she's already served, I think, five years, and so she could only serve one additional year as a citizen member. So things to keep in context.
My understanding was if you do a one-year term, if you're elected to one year, that is a term. You're only allowed two terms. So if you're... Like I did the first year, the final year of a term, that's considered one, and then I redone for the second term. But when I'm done with that second term, I cannot be on it again. I have to take a break for at least one term.
I was under the understanding it was six years. I don't know where we would get that clarity. We'd have to look at the committee structure, I guess.
4623, Karen Forrest, the statute on point, and that coupled with looking at our committee guidelines document. Chris, if you can bring up the relevant portion on that committee. Those are the two sources of authority.
It says there will be six supervisors and three citizens. Two board members and one citizen shall be elected each year with no one serving more than two terms without a one-year absence. So if you're going to define it as term, then yes, the years doesn't matter. Term is a term. That's for Vernon... No, that's for human services. Oh, you're talking about, he's got it. Is Jill online? Jill Bender?
Is John writing something?
I think so. That's the term regardless of the years. When you finish a term, that is a term. Term is a term, so we look at it as terms, not years. In case you didn't hear that, John, you were right in your assumption. A term is a term. When you finish a term, that is a complete term. So does that change at all?
It doesn't change. I don't think it changes anything.
Okay.
Or does it? So Gail wouldn't be eligible to be a citizen, you're saying? No, I'm saying like Sandy's term that she's not finishing now, whoever finishes her term will not be there for three years.
Right, they're going to finish that term, and that's one term.
That's one term, yeah. And that may have something to do with Gail, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either because Jill was the one that asked me if I would be willing to serve. So I assume she must have known whether I was eligible or not.
We're kind of of the opinion that, no, you can't take the citizen seat, you know?
This is Nikki Gail, and for the sake of the board, my thoughts are that when she vacates her current occupancy, takes a new one, that's commencing that third term, which would not be consistent with the guidelines of the committee.
But she could be considered for Vernon Manor.
Was your question? Did Gail have a question then?
No, my statement was that she could be considered for Vernon Manor as a citizen-at-large.
Yes. Board is open for a position on human service, the veteran service?
To replace David Egan.
Yeah, for David Egan's position, which is a full three-year term. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Pat Sullivan.
Pat Sullivan by Will Bightlake? Oh, we don't need a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed, and I would request a unanimous ballot for Patrick Sullivan. A motion, Charlie? Second... Wade? Sorry. Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I know. I had it. I almost...
Pat Sullivan. And for clarity, Allison has got one year left on your term. John Padretti has got two years left on your term. Kay Stanek has got one more. So we need to have one for a one-year term to fill Gail Mueller's... Muller. I made that mistake twice, and I won't make it again. John?
I'll nominate Lonnie Mueller. You might be... Is that a conflict or not to go to Vernon Manor? Here's... Are the rules for terms on trustees? Well, there is no terms for Vernon Manor.
Your term, but it doesn't say you can't serve multiple term.
Your term, but it doesn't say you can't serve multiple term.
Could I say something? So it seems like there's quite a few new ones that are left now. And I think the good part about this is before we did the reorganization, a lot of new members did not get on voted committees because there were twenty-nine. So you could have gone many years without ever serving on an elected committee. So it's really, I think, a great thing that this is all divided up equally. And you can attend any meeting that you want to. And you can be in the closed session portion of that meeting. So I think it's a great learning experience, and you are given that opportunity to serve on a committee. Maybe it's not the one you thought you wanted to be on, but at least you get to serve on an elected committee, which is very important, in my opinion.
We are taking nominations for the one-year for one, one.
One two-year term?
It's a three-year term.
But it's one year left of a two of a three.
This is a full three-year. Gail Mueller is done now.
Okay.
Okay, for clarity.
Yeah, we need some clarity, Allison.
Clarify.
Let's slow down, right?
Can I clarify for a second? The the myself, John Padretti, and Kay's seats are not open for election right now.
Correct.
So that is not what you're voting on. It's Gail's Mueller's seat of a one-year term that you are voting that you are taking nominations for?
It is. It is a first term, but it'll be a three-year term.
Okay, so it's a full-on three-year term. That's the seat.
Her end ended in twenty.
Okay, I thought there was one year left. Okay, so this is for a three-year term.
Correct.
One person.
One person for a three.
Can we clarify, can Lonnie refuse the nomination, or does John have to rescind the nomination?
I think anybody can decline a nomination.
Are there people that are not on a committee that are interested? Because you can only be on one. So raise your hand if you're left and you if this is something of interest.
I'll nominate Wade Lawler.
Allison nominates Wade. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations, Mary? Uh nominations are closed. And we'll have a request for a motion to cast unanimous ballot for Wade Lawler.
I'll make that motion.
Daniel Slack. Seconded by Allison. All in favor, aye? Aye.
Okay.
John?
This is probably getting into the weeds a little bit, but it doesn't look like there's a lot of people that want to be nominated for this right now, because we only have one. What's going to happen when we can't fill that seat because nobody wants to be nominated? And we get down to Vernon Manor, and there's five people that want to be on that committee, and there's only four spots. Then we go back. How do you do that? Or do we just beat people up until they decide that somebody's going to do it?
The latter.
You know, really? Because that's where we're at right now, I think.
Now we got Sandy's position now.
Do we do Sandy's? We can't things first. It doesn't matter. They're just a position.
I think. Why couldn't you resign? I don't know why you couldn't.
But you have nineteen board members and nineteen seats, so everybody gets one.
If she wants to resign, she could resign right now, and then we're going to have six people fighting for four spots on Vernon Manor. So for three spots. So Gail, are you going to resign? Or Gail, are you going to resign? Because if you are, you should do it now.
Allison?
I would just like to make a little bit of a plug for Human Services and Veteran Services Committee. I have been, this is my fourth term. I was on this my first time. You know, I'm in, I got one year left. If you want to learn the ins and outs of services that we provide the county and how we help constituents who need our help in the darkest of times sometimes, this is the committee you should be on. You will learn so much about this county. I thought I knew a lot until I was in there. Would you agree, Mr. Egan?
Microphone, please.
Amazing learning experience, serving on human services. I would encourage anybody that is the least bit interested to throw your hat in and your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, can you explain where we're at with this right now? So Gail's one-year, one-year position, Wade has taken that. So now we have Sandy's. What are we filling? Just help me understand what. And that's a.
Sandy's or is it?
Open for the full three years.
Sandy Schweiger's.
Is that right, Sandy?
Has got two years left on it.
She has two years left on that. Okay. And then you would be up again. Not that's your you're served for the first time. That's your first time. Okay.
And she she's off now because she's on another committee.
And then Kathleen is that's that's a citizen. All right, all right. So there's no other but.
Kathleen cannot serve again. She's served two terms.
How about Nancy and Frank?
You look to the right when we say Kathleen Sullivan, and there's a.
Those are all citizens. Okay, so this.
Blank space, and then there's the twenty-twenty-one, and it says second year, second, three-year. And this is the term, twenty-one, twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four is the is the term.
All right, I got it. Mr. Chairman, I put my name in for the Sandy's position. If that's what the next one we're applying for. Is that accurate?
Okay.
I would put my name in for nomination for that. David Strudoff. Four years ago, I was on this committee, so I'd been on this, and I was also on Veterans Services. So this it'll be it'll be a good fit. So.
Are there any other nominations? David, your microphone? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And need a motion to cast unanimous ballot for David Strudhoff? Okay, Dave and Kevin. All in favor, aye? Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Now we have a a three-year term for a citizen at large. In your packet, you'll find letters of interest from Gail, but we've pretty much determined she cannot serve. There's one from Dennis Brought. There is one from Jean Clausia. I guess that's it. Those two, Dennis Brought and Jean Clausia. Open the floor to nominations.
I second that.
No second required. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jean Clausia.
For Jean Clausia. Any other nominations? Jean. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, we have Dennis and Jean. Are is any of them available for comment? Online? It is twelve for Clausia. It is six for Brought. Clausia has the majority.
Yeah, they do. So. There's four supervisors left.
Well, I think you still have to elect because the terms are different.
Okay.
So you still have to fill the seats. Well, starting with Ole's seat. That term ends in twenty-twenty-five. Okay, the first one on Vernon Manor Board of Trustees is filling Ole's seat, and it the seat expires in twenty-twenty-five. And is that the sec? No, that would be the person or person. So there's no.
Wait a minute.
No term limits. No term.
No term limit.
Term limits. See, we have we got Bruce Kilmer. We've got Kevin. We've got Lonnie. And okay, yeah, then we got a citizen.
Three, yeah, three work.
Three, three board members, yep. There's no sliding. Need a foment. Yeah, we need a nomination for the seat being vacated by Ole.
Lonnie Mueller, I nominate myself.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Uh nominations are closed. Motion for unanimous ballot for Lonnie Mueller. Mueller. Man. Slap me again, you know?
Did somebody make the motion?
Pat. Seconded by Mary. All in favor, aye? Aye. Now we're looking for a should we do the citizen one or go to all the boards?
Let's do your board. So you've taken Mary Bring, the term ends in twenty-twenty-five.
Mary Bring's seat ends in twenty-twenty-five.
I'll nominate Kevin Walliser.
Nomination for Kevin Walliser. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Kevin Walliser and Bruce Kilmer. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Vote for Kevin Walliser or Bruce Kilmer. Oh, you guys want to give a speech?
Maybe wonder if it would help if we changed the order of the election started at the top with Brown. Because it's this is not it's not like a lesser committee. It's like it's just the last committee. You know, I always feel bad that.
Walliser, ten, Kilmer, eight. Walliser has majority. Almost a tie. But I I want to reiterate what Allison said. This is this is just the last committee that gets voted on. It's not the least committee. It's it's a very important committee. You know, it's a it it always ends up last, but it's 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 not any less important than any other committee that's on the the county. So with that, we have one more spot to fill. Mary Bring's spot. Oh, oh, Mary Mehan Stroop's spot that expires in twenty-twenty-six. So that's a it's a three-year term. Two more years, yeah. Nomination for Bruce. And there are no more nominations. So I request a move for unanimous ballot for Bruce Kilmer.
Chairman Allison, unanimous ballot here.
And Dave Strudoff. All in favor, aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Now we need a no, we're done.
Citizen.
Citizen member for Lonnie Lonnie Mueller's position, who is now a board member.
I nominate Chris Brigham. And her letter is in your packet. Chris has been our interim administrator at Vernon Manor. And we hired somebody new to fill that spot on Monday. But Chris knows the ins and outs of what's been happening at Vernon Manor and what's it called? Acres? I wanted to say Fairhaven, but.
The the letters are like a supplement to the packet because I didn't have them when I printed the packet. So it's like three pages. We had a letter from Ole Itrie. We have a letter from Deborah Tewalt. And then you have one from Chris Brigham. Are there any other nominations? Allison?
I'll nominate Ole Itrie. He has been on the board for a long time and has a lot of historic knowledge that could be useful and in the interest of choice, again.
Are there any other nominations?
Point of order here. Is it Barb McNeil's term? She's still on, correct?
She's got.
We're not talking about Barb McNeil.
Her her term expires in twenty-six. She's.
I got. Oh, yeah, pushed. No.
Brandon, can you step up? Lonnie, you Lonnie, you held a citizen's seat. You can't hold a citizen's seat as a board supervisor. That seat's vacant. That's what we're filling.
You filled Ole Itrie's spot. So that's where you are. So now your spot as a citizen is open. Look at your sheet. It's better visual.
So, uh, yeah, Barb McNeil's term expires in twenty-six. She's still a board a board member right now. So we are voting on. So, uh, yeah, Barb McNeil's term expires in 26. She's still a board, a board member right now. So we are voting on Lonnie Mueller's replacement on the citizen committee. And we have, uh. How many, we have.
Three people that.
Chris, Chris Brigham and Ole Itrie.
Deborah Tewalt.
And, but Deborah Tewalt does not have a, uh. A nomination yet.
Correct, but you haven't closed nominations.
Right, right.
Just tell me all three of the people that have asked.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? No, you're a board member now. How can you be? You can't be on there twice, Lonnie. It expired yesterday.
Sure, go, go.
What? You were just elected to the committee. You were just elected to the committee as a supervisor. Your title change. Uh, any other nominations? We're going to vote between Chris Brigham and Ole Itrie.
Always online.
Always online.
He should be afforded a chance to give his stump speech. Chris Brigham is online.
Ole, let's go first. Can you hear us, Ole? Ole, can you hear us?
There he is. Give it. You have to unmute.
Ole, you have to unmute yourself. Hey, Ole, try pushing and holding down the spacebar.
Now, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I. As you know, I've been on the Vernon Manor Committee for the last eighteen years. I've been chairman for at least fourteen of those years. Have gone through a lot of experiences with the committee, with the home and built, helped build assisted living, earned acres. And so I feel I have a lot of knowledge in that respect. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ole. Is Chris online?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Chris Brigham. I've been involved in the daily operations of both Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres for, for the last almost six months. I'm interested in being a community member just to, to continue to carry on some of the projects that have been started here. Um, and to help support projects going forward. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed. We're going to vote for Chris or Ole. Brigham eleven, Itrie seven. Brigham has the majority. Well, thank you, everybody, for your patience. For committee assignments, I encourage you to reach out to me and Cassie and I'm going to have Allison. She's talked to a lot of you. To, uh, you know, get you on the, the, the assigned committees that you want to be on. And that'll be happening in the, what's, what's the dead, drop dead date for that, Cassie?
I think we're hoping to have that done by the end of the month so that when May starts, well, general government is May first. So it'd be ideal if we could get it done within, you know, a week or a week and a half.
That should work. So just reach out to one of us and we'll, we'll get together and make a plan. So. Thank you for your patience. This has been long, but it's been what we have to do.
Lauren, can you reiterate how many committees people can be on or, because it's a different process than this.
There. Is, is there a list on your paper?
Well, not, not that we had it, but you have your somewhere.
There, there's Board of Health, Finance, General Government, Public Safety, Economic Development, Opioid Prevention and Abatement, the Planning Commission, A D R C, Highway Safety, Land Information.
For, for what it's worth, Chris has pulled up on the screen. It's page four of the Vernon County Committees and Commissions Structures, Rules, and Responsibilities document. This defines the structure of the various committees. It gives you some authority that's, that backs up and supports the whys. As far as why the committees are structured the way they are when they're guided by statute or other authorities. And it's available online. If you guys go to the Vernon County website and then go to the government section. You'll see the map with all the districts. You'll see the board rules, which I highly encourage, and I'm going to plug those now while I've got your attention. Review those and then re-review. You'll always see something in there. Um, and it's important to stay fresh with those as well as it'll give you access to this committee structure document.
Sure.
And if you are a new board member, you had a copy of the board rules and a copy of this document that's up on the screen in that blue folder I gave you when we met. Thanks. Now.
This listing of the committees is not in that folder, but if you want one, you can just ask and we can make you a copy of it. There's all, are the two representatives and stuff like that on that one too? Yes, okay. Here's your copy.
And you roll back here, sir.
No, I don't. I got.
You got.
I got. Going back to the agenda.
Lauren, could I ask one question?
Um.
I believe that people don't have their, the new people don't have your emails and stuff set up. So if you are on Health and Human Services, the meeting's nine thirty tomorrow at the Erlinson Building. Nine thirty tomorrow morning at the Erlinson Building for Health and Human Services.
I'm going to put a plug in for the know before team. There's a, a, a lot of us that haven't completed our training and I imagine the new board members are also, are they going to get a little bit of a break or are they going to get?
There are over forty people in the county that haven't completed their security training. If you have not, this, I was going to include this in my report, but if you have not completed the security training and you're not a brand new board member, you will not have access as of Friday. Lauren. We are doing IT orientation for the new board members after we adjourn here. Chris will get you set up.
I, I have been communicating with the new people with their personal emails and I'll continue to do that until I know that you have a county email. Um, if there's something that needs to go out. So we will, okay. Until that, you know, we're, we're not going to lose communication with you in the, in the short term. In my own defense, Cassie, I thought they were phishing me. Mary.
For that orientation afterwards, is that the same time that if you want a laptop, you get this? Because I've been waiting for a laptop. A county assigned one because my personal one is on its last legs. Okay, thanks. Oh, so the opioid committee is new and this whole new zoning thing is new? Do those flip over too right now?
Yeah, there will be new appointments because some of them on, I know the planning commission people are, a few of them aren't on the board anymore. So there'll be new appointments there.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, and it may be, you know, if you're on a, if you're on a committee that you would rather change, you know, make, express that also that you would like to. I don't want to be on the sheriff's committee anymore. I'd rather be on the opioid steering or whatever, you know, whatever, you know, whatever your feelings are. And we, we will do our best to accommodate you. I mean, that's, uh. We'd like to put people where they're interested in.
Give me one second. I'm trying to get twenty of those.
Jerry's going to provide you guys with the document too, um, once we get towards the end of the meeting here. That outlines all of those appointive and advisory committees in which terms are up. So you have an idea of, you know, who sits on what right now, what committees are open. Um, and then I will, uh, once we adjourn, I will hang out too. If anyone wants to talk about, uh, which committees they'd like to be on, I will be available. You do have a list of committees. I gave it to you last week.
I'm working on getting you one of these that I have here, so. All right, so next up, minutes. Approve the minutes from March twenty first, two thousand twenty four meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Motion by Agan, seconded by Pedretti. All in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Are there any announcements? Anybody online have an announcement? I have an announcement. Um, as a lot of you know, we're having the June Dairy Breakfast at, uh, Gady Acres. And before COVID, it was, I don't know, the county board usually worked the ticket booth. So if we have any volunteers that would like to work the ticket booth from the county board, it would be appreciated. We got Mary volunteering.
Oh, I was wondering, was that Walliser's? Was that at yours, Kevin?
Yeah.
It was fun.
June twenty second, yeah. Yeah, I've worked it a couple, three times and it's, the first time was like, oh, no. And after that, it's actually a lot of fun. You get to, you get to see a lot of people that you generally don't run into. I, I, I come later at your place because I have stuff to do that early in the morning. Yeah. So, um, I'm not really sure right now who's the chairman of that committee. I, there's a lot of stuff going on. As Kevin's had it before, he knows there, it's a whirlwind of stuff. It's just, you know, basically it's you and three thousand of your best friends and relatives that show up. So a lot of stuff going on. But yeah, contact me and it, uh, I think they did it in three shifts. I'm not sure your, Mary was the chairman of that committee once and I'm not sure where the, where the packet ended up at. Okay.
Don't show up first.
Yeah, and if you, you know, if you, if you don't sign up and you want to come and hang out at the ticket booth, that's, that's all wonderful. So it is June twenty second. Any other announcements? Resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty four, twenty five, designation of Mississippi River Trail within Vernon County. You speaking on that?
We have.
Oh, need a motion. Bring it to the floor. A, seconded by John.
I wrote on Jerry's paper. Crystal, right.
Still, good morning. Um, good morning. My name is Francis Scholfford. I work for the Department of Transportation out of La Crosse office. Um, I just want to mention a couple of people that are here with me. I got Sherry Kwame. She's the chair of the Mississippi River Parkway Commission. Um, and she's like, um, also the commissioner for Crawford County. And then Lee Neerison is here and he's, uh, um, one of the commission. Board members on the commission for, and is your Vernon County representative there? Um, I'm here to present to you today, um, a, a formal route to designate the Mississippi River Trail through Vernon County. Um, we've met with, um, all the communities that it currently runs through, um, from, uh, the north county line along the river, um, to the south county line. Um, and, um. The presentation that's up, um, I'll go through, I can go through it. Um, but the, the synopsis is, is that I've gotten a resolution from every community that it runs through. Um, the goal is to make this a, a, both a state and a US designated bike route. For the Vernon County, it will follow Highway thirty five for the entire length through Vernon County. Um, it doesn't, um, provide funding or separation or, or those types of things. What it does do is it designates the route and is a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, um, for the department. Um, when we have roadway projects, for instance, the one that's, um, occurred just north of, of Ferryville, um, in the most recent years. It allows me to, to leverage, um, wider paved shoulders. So if there's a current shoulder that's eight feet of gravel or, um, and part, and three feet of it is paved, I can get five or six feet of that paved versus just, um, the three feet that's currently out there. To provide a little bit wider facility for those bicyclists and to provide them a little more separation from the travel lanes. I'm also the, uh, co-chair of the National Transportation Committee for the, um, ten-state Great River Road Group, which is why the Mississippi River Parkway Commission is, is co-sponsoring this. Our goal is to make this a US bike route along all ten states, um, that border the Mississippi River. Of the ten states, eight of them currently have this route signed and designated. Um, Wisconsin and Illinois are the only two that don't. So we've been at this for about eighteen months. Um, we've got resolutions from all of Buffalo County, all of Tremblow County. I'm missing only City La Crosse and La Crosse County at this point. Um, and those will be, are scheduled here in the next couple of weeks. Then all of La Crosse County will be done. Grant County is completely done and so is Crawford County. So, and then that leaves me just Pierce and Pepin County will be done with this. Our goal is to have this done by March of, um, twenty twenty five in time for the biennial budget request. We have four legislative representatives on our committee. Um, those legislative representatives drafted legislation that's actually this last budget go around to fund the purchase and installation of those signs. They did pull it from the budget because we just weren't in a position to have all these resolutions in place, um, to spend it in this biennial, this most recent biennial budget. But our goal is to have all those resolutions in place, um, in preparation for that. And they've, um, vouched that they will, um, present that same legislation to pay for the signs on this next go around. That's the short synopsis. I can provide more. Um, we did present to the, um. Economic Development Committee and got their endorsement, um, in, as a precursor to meeting with you guys today.
Uh, one thing about this too is there's no budgetary effect for Vernon County. So this is just like a, a freebie that the state's going to help us all with. And hopefully people are going to use that road either way. And if we can make it safer, that'd be the biggest thing for me.
On Barocqua Development Economic. I just got on the board last week and this would be huge. This would be awesome. So I totally support it.
Is both white, is both, uh, sides of the road going to be wider than it is now?
So we're not going to widen the road. That's not what this will do. It's going to take the existing roadway. As you're well aware of, majority of Highway thirty five is tucked between the railroad and, and, and or the bluff on, and in some cases. and or the, uh, bluff on, and in some cases on both sides. So the, the, there's no funding to widen. Ultimately, with the railroad there, the opportunity to widen is, is zero in some cases. What it will do is again, it'll afford me the ability to leverage wider paved shoulders, which basically is just paving portions that are currently gravel, I guess is the best way to put it.
You know, we've talked about this for just ages and I live right over there by Stoddard going through there. And we always thought, gee, if we could just get a bike trail from La Crosse to Stoddard and then on the prairie. And here, uh, here's our opportunity, but folks, it's, it's taken years to get this thinking here, but you know, squeaky wheel does get the grease here and we, we're going. And glad to hear it.
Any other questions? Allison?
I was gonna make a motion.
Motion, motion has been made.
It has been made. Thank you.
All those in favor, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five for designation of the Mississippi River Trail within Vernon County, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Regular Order of Business Administrator Courtney has reported.
Uh, so again, uh, welcome to our new board members. You've almost made it through your first county board meeting. So big sigh of relief there. I want to thank, uh, Jerry, his staff, uh, the municipal clerks and the poll workers, uh, for all of their work on the spring election, in addition to those that assisted with the canvas and the recount. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into an election process that we don't necessarily see. So good job, Jerry, making it run smoothly. I'm happy to announce that we've hired an interim administrator for Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. Uh, Peter Lear comes to us with many years of experience and is a licensed nursing home administrator. Yesterday was his first day with Vernon County. I've received the draft management agreement from Bethany St. Joe's for Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. Again, this is a first draft. The agreement, um, is currently under review by Nikki and myself. The next step will be to present the draft agreement to the Vernon Manor Board of Trustees in May. Tricia and I met with a wage consultant. We're just wrapping up those, uh, changes for our wage study. I will spend the next couple of weeks working out the costing. From there, the draft will be presented to the General Government Committee and then ultimately the county board. We continue to recruit for the finance director position. It's been a little bit of a tough go. There aren't very many people out there that are qualified for that position and that are in our area, so we've been very creative with our recruitment techniques there. In the interim, um, I'm acting as the interim finance director. Uh, we're currently working on required reporting. Uh, we've got quarterly tax filing that we'll handle here in the next week. Preparations for the twenty twenty-three audit. And then, uh, working through some initial training with Tyler Technologies for our H R I S and our E R P systems. The audit for Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres is complete. So the plan is to present that to Board of Trustees in May. We'll be holding a special meeting, um, for an informational session regarding the decommissioning of the dams. Uh, that meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, April twenty-third at noon here in the county boardroom. And we will be sending out an email with the agenda as well. I already spoke about the I T security training. UW Extension and the Wisconsin Counties Association, um, are holding county official workshops in May. Um, May sixteenth, which is coincidentally scheduled for our next board meeting, um, is the closest. That'll be held in Prairie Duchene. You do have pa- uh, packet here from the counties association, so that has a county officials handbook in it. It also has information on those, uh, county officials workshops. I do have a new board orientation ses- session scheduled for April twenty-sixth. And then another for May twenty-second. I would anticipate that some of our, um, continuing board members will be interested in participating, participating in the May session. Um, and I'll be sending an email out with details for those sessions. And May twenty-second, yep. As John Pedretti stated, uh, Human Services Committee meets tomorrow at nine thirty. So if you are on that committee, um, that is over in the Erlinson Building. If you do not know where that is in your new, um, board member packet, you have a map of the county facilities. So you should be able to find it there. For April twenty-sixth, um, eight to noon, I have scheduled. And then the same for May twenty-second. That's the plan, yep. Yep. Yeah. Yes. April twenty-sixth from eight to noon. And May twenty-second. Eight to noon, yep. The April twenty-sixth is, um, geared towards the new board members because it's gonna be an introduction to department heads and, but the May session will be, um, uh, more geared at the whole board. Um, and then as I stated previously, I will be hanging out after the meeting if anyone wants to discuss, um, committees, appointments, or any other county business.
Thank you, Cassie. Are there any petitions? Are there any ordinances? Are there any memorials or remonstrances? Reports from standing committees or special committees? Any unfinished business? Our next regular meeting is Thursday, May sixteenth. Cassie?
I'm curious if there's, um, any opinions on changing the meeting date, knowing that that county officials workshop is an all-day session in Prairie Duchene on May sixteenth.
You can do that at your, at your pleasure, but you gotta remember these cadences of meetings. We could flip it to the fourth Thursday and go to the twenty-third. Objection to the twenty-third, we can do that. Set of May sixteenth, twenty-third. Does that work with everybody? No objection, then switch it. Seeing no objection, we will move the meeting date back one week.
May twenty-third.
To May twenty-third. Oops. Anybody have any requests for agenda items for the next meeting? We will, I would assume next meeting could be because Connor couldn't make this meeting. It's a scheduling conflict. So that, um, next meeting, we'll be getting an update from the I T department on some of the big projects that are happening in the county. We have nine-one-one and stuff going on. There's, there's really a lot going on. We'll let Connor tell you about it next meeting.
And I'm gonna present an ordinance amendment to Gen Gov that may likely end up on the May agenda for county board too.
Guess I'll be around for a while after the meeting also for people that want to talk about committees. And, um, with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Wade and Charlie. All in favor? One second. Charlie. Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. And just after.